I need to borrow that because I can't read it on the screen. Good afternoon, welcome to our city council chambers. Today's date is April 10, 2023. Time is 5:30 PM. Council chambers are located at 10 West State Street and I am calling the meeting to order for a regular meeting of the Marshawn City Council. For those able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Very good. Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. Full house. And I think, let's see, we read the public participation at the beginning, don't we now?
Nope.
Nope? All right. How about, uh... Ready for public comment? So I read the top one or the... That one? Okay. Well, then I don't understand why that's at the top. I'm getting too old learning these new tricks. Okay. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. To speak, you have to approach the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. Speaker shall direct the comments to the mayor and the councils as a whole, and the mayor and councilor should not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and actually be taken on those items raised in the public... In public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. With that said, should we do the public comment before we do mayor, council, and the presidential comments? Yeah, we do, don't we? Okay. The microphone is open.
Good evening. Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. The weather is getting nice and we're always compared to other communities. And I think the four-way stop signs with the solar-powered stop signs with the red flashing lights are great. Nevada uses those. We could use them very efficiently right here in Marshalltown. Now, another issue. We have dogs and cats and the ordinance states neither of those are to be running at large. And I remember back when we had licensing fees. Nevada has licensing fees. And I think we need to go back to that. They have to have rabies shots, both of them equally. It would help the league. There would be a record. And just like when there has been dogs that have caused problems and stuff, there could be a record of what is happening because we've had people speak about that as well. And I'd like to remind people that are using the bike trails and stuff, if they're taking their pets along with, please pick up their doggy doo-doo because that's just being a responsible owner and common sense. But thank you all for letting me have this time to speak.
Anyone else?
Hello. Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. I'm here today to speak about our vicious dog ordinance. Because of the limited amount of time I have had at some of the past council meetings, I will have to continue tonight. Section 90.024 of our city ordinance states, "A dog found at large shall be sterilized, spayed, or neutered at the owner's expense if and upon the owner or keeper of the dog is found guilty of a second or subsequent dog at large under this chapter. There is no time limitation from the prior offense in determining whether the offense is a second, third, or subsequent offense. A dog found at large shall be forfeited if and upon the owner or the keeper be found guilty of a third or subsequent offense of the dog at large." This part of our city ordinance is okay. This is why it is important to make sure that all reports and records of dogs at large must be kept. The following is not. "The city ordinance needs to be preemptive of attack, not after attack. After attack is too late for the first victim. The ordinance continues. Any animal, including but not limited to dogs, with a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack and provoke, as evidenced by its habitual or repeated chasing, snapping, biting at human beings or domestic animals so as to potentially cause injury or otherwise endanger the safety, shall be declared vicious. The chief of police, a qualified veterinarian, or the animal warden are authorized to make this declaration. Also, any dog without provocation that bites a human being or domestic animal is declared vicious." The following part is not okay. "The ordinance continues and addresses vicious dogs, but this only applies to dogs if the dog is licensed. All vicious animals must be licensed and followed. Their applicant must be accompanied by an insurance policy or a certificate of insurance issued by a company licensed to do business in the state of Iowa, providing personal liability coverage as in a homeowner's plot with a minimum liability of $100,000 for the injury or death of any persons or for damage to their property. If the owner is neglectful as this, the dog will be declared vicious. However, after contacting several insurance companies, they have a list of dogs that are not covered by the liability insurance, and they have assured me that under no circumstances will any dog that has been declared to vicious be covered by any insurance company." So this part of the ordinance is a waste of ink and paper. This all happens after a dog has already bitten a person in the first place and it has proved attacked. So this is what happened to my fiancee Kathy. Her dog was fatally attacked and killed. She was bitten and had to go through the rabies protocol, $5,000, at her own expense. This is unacceptable and must be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Time for the next item. We're up to E and that is mayor, council, and administrative comments. Anybody on the council have any comments?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
After passing the speed change on Lincoln Way, I'm still getting some calls. I don't know if anybody else is. But I think that's something we kind of need to monitor if there's a way to do that, even before the speed camera gets put up out there if we do take that direction. And then the other thing, as much as I want to, uh, and, and talk about a level playing field for all people in the city, uh, there's instant karma that exists and be careful what you ask for because even I, a council member, got turned in for a nuisance complaint on a property that I don't own, but I utilize. So I just want you to know that, uh, I want to thank that person for lighting a fire under me and, uh, I'll get off my lazy butt and get that cleaned up. So it worked. The system does work. So if you see nuisances in town, make sure you call them in or go online and put them in. So, thank you, your honor.
Thank you. I just hope that fire that was lit under you didn't violate our, our burning ordinance. Anyone else up here? Okay. Well, uh... And administrator?
None, sir, your honor.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for Brian Patterson. He is one of our best of the best of the blue. And he just died this last week, uh, as I understand it, Alzheimer's. It was a diagnosis fairly recently, like October or November. I remember him well when the tornado hit and I got to the fire department and he was the guy. He was the guy that people were looking to. He was instrumental in our recovery from that fire. And so a moment of silence for his wife Julie and his children, please. Thank you. You know, we're always trying to recruit police officers and it's hard to replace people like Brian. So we just have to keep up our efforts. Thank you. All right. On to the consent agendas. I understand that we have polled number...
Wait, first, your honor, uh, we have Jeff Hubbard here, um, who was recently recognized with the Slattery True Blood Professional Award, issued by the Iowa Parks and Rec Association. This is the highest honor that anybody in the Iowa park and recreation field can receive. And, uh, Jeff, unbeknownst to him, uh, received the award. So, um, he, he said he was sitting there listening to the, the words being said about the recipient and it took him a little bit to realize that it was him. So, uh, we just want to recognize Jeff for, for his outstanding years of service, not just with the city of Marshalltown, but with Sioux City and Council Bluffs as well, and his dedication to parks and recreation and, uh, that career.
The camera, the camera didn't show the plaque, but yeah, come on, Jeff. And it was right, it was when they mentioned Marshalltown that you knew it, right?
Um, they said that I was the, well, like, they're trying to make it vague to not really give it away till the end. And they said this person is usually the emcee at our banquet and the auctioneer, which I've been probably 15 of the last 20 years because I'm a little outgoing and like to get people excited. But then they said, and he, he recently has, has become the director at his hometown. And it's like, okay, that's like the only one in the group. That's gotta be me, so. So I got up there to get my award and I look over and, uh, my mentor, Terry Hoffman, who is actually from Marshalltown, uh, he hired me as my first job in Sioux City 24 years ago. Uh, he nominated me and then my wife came out, my parents came out, Jenny Hart came out. And so then it was kind of like, all right, I gotta keep this together. It's a little overwhelming. And so I thanked everybody that I thought I could thank. And then at the end, we were taking pictures and Terry comes up to me and goes, uh, who are you supposed to thank? And I said, I thanked you. And he goes, no. Like, I don't know, who did I miss? He goes, your wife. So I just want to thank my wife for, uh, putting up with me, uh, for these 20, uh, almost seven years now and allowing me to do this great job. So I'll make sure she watches this video, uh, when we get home tonight. But what I kind of told everybody too in the, my, my speech kind of was, you know, you get surrounded by good people who make you look good. And here in Marshalltown, we have that. I have great staff working for me, uh, which is awesome. You guys as a council help support Park and Rec, give me some money for projects to do and, um, great department head directors to work with. So, um, it's been a pretty, pretty easy job for the last 27 years. I won't call it work, uh, but it's been fun doing this. And I got 10 more years left before I can retire, so I'm not done yet. And maybe we can go in something else.
Thank you. Congratulations. You know, there's a, a plaque out by one of the trails for Bob Workman and Terry Gray still is helping the city out on the trees forever and that sort of thing. So you follow some pretty good people, but we are just delighted to have you here. And, uh, it took you a year to quit joking about the fact you returned home to live with your parents until you found your own place to live, so. And then, uh, we, we saw, the governor and I saw you as we were touring the, uh, Dorico here. And you were out, uh, doing the, um, uh, surveying of the damage in the trees. So I pointed you out and, you know, people that have them in the West End Park to enjoy what's going on there. Well, all the things you do. That was a really well-deserved award and I, and I can't believe I almost missed this tonight.
I will add that the contractor who was responsible for the 560 stumps in the parks is done. So, and he found 12 more that we didn't account for, so 572 stumps are removed and I'm excited about that. Best day ever.
You know, the, that crew is working in, on Fourth Street, Fifth Street, up by Hughes and Park in my neighborhood. And it's amazing, he's got a remote-controlled device that does it and he's doing such a good job. They worked on Easter Sunday, they worked on Saturday, you know, they were really working the way here in, in town too. That was a good hire, that one. And I'm talking too much again. Okay. Is it time for the consent agenda now? I keep screwing it up. All right. We're pulling number one. Are we pulling number five still? Okay. One and five are out, but the others, one through eight, are in. Is there a motion to approve the remaining?
No move, your honor.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Speaking of Isoms, I saw Baby Isom on the sidewalk as I was coming here from home, by the way. Didn't have a chance to stop and look in the buggy. All right. That was approved and so let's, uh, take up number one. Is there a motion? Oh, you read the items first, don't you?
Approve of the license renewals for Adelina's Grill, 101 North Center Street, Dollar General, number, uh, 2019, at 408 South Knight Street, Elmwood Country Club at 1734 Country Club Lane with outdoor service, Hy-Vee Food and Drug Store, 802 South Center Street, Hy-Vee Party Room at 802 South Center Street, La Correta Mexican Grill at 308 Iowa Avenue East with outdoor service, Smoke and Jizz BBQ Restaurant and Catering at 25 West Main Street, Zemora's Fresh Market at 4 East Main Street, approve the civil service new hire list for police officer and transit operator, receipt of building and trade permit report for March of 2023. Resolution 202368 approving the code building upgrade grant application for 119 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution 202369 to approve the facade grant application for 119 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution 202370 approving the facade grant application for 123 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve number one? Which, I guess you could read to us.
Approve the minutes for the March 27th, 2023 meeting and the bill listing the amount of $1,756,147.30. Sorry, 37 cents.
I've moved to approve, your honor.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion.
Thank you, your honor. First, two things. A special request, um, and I think Diana is going to have to answer this for me. On the housing assistance payments, um, everyone is listed for each apartment. For a better paper trail for us in the public, is it possible on all these line items to put the address and the apartment number?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I'll have to look and to see what some of that information, some of the information related to housing assistance and HUD program is protected. And so we do have to be cautious about releasing certain information that would, um, identify a person's, um, personal information. So that's why a lot of that time that information is not available. Where are we listed landlords and things like that for the payments? But identifying addresses that would be able to identify down to the person can be protected information by HUD.
I get that. I said, I didn't even think about that.
Yeah.
And then, Michelle, then, um, so if we're making multiple payments for each apartment, um, and if we can't disclose the addresses, wouldn't it be just simpler to just group them together or is this the paper trail you need for all the reporting that your department does?
Correct. Yeah, we have to identify each individual payment, um, for our tracking purposes. Um, and so there, the checks that are made are one lump sum, but, um, they identify. And sometimes we have things that come in at different time periods when we're having, what we consider interim changes. So we make payments at the end of the month, but then we also have changes that happen to people's situations throughout the month.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other, my second question, uh, or point, your honor, is, um, what is Spyglass Group Internet Service? We paid them, I think, almost, what, 40, what is that? $4,200 for internet service? Sounds like a Chinese balloon floating over Marshalltown. I'm not sure what that is.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. We have a contract with Spyglass, so they go through, um, all of our communications, so our telephone, internet, cell phones, that kind of stuff, and try and identify savings. So then, um, we share in the savings. So, um, they renegotiated our contract with Heart of Iowa. So they get the, what we would have paid for one year, they get that. And then because the costs are then lower for the next 12 months, then we net zero for that 12-month period, but after that, we, we get the savings.
Then what exactly is it they, that they do for us to get savings? Is it something we should be doing on our own? I mean, do they have access to information that we don't have ourselves?
They, well, like for the, they get a copy of all of our bills. So I sent them like two or three months of bills for our telephone service, our internet, uh, cellphone bills, uh, that type of thing. And then they go through the bills to see if there's any things that are being charged that shouldn't be charged, um, if there's any special deals they could make and that type of thing. So they negotiate it. So they went to Heart of Iowa and, um, they identified that we could get a lower price for our service.
So what we paid them is for one year's worth of the savings that they found?
Right.
And then how often do we do this with them?
Um, we did it maybe three years ago, around there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Yeah. Any other discussion up here by the council or out there by the public? Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay. That passed on to number five. Would you read that one?
Resolution 202367 delaying accepting of bid and award of contract for the Marshawn Facade Rehabilitation Project Number ECO 21002 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa.
We're hoping for motion to approve.
Move to approve, your honor.
Second.
And discussion.
And this one, your honor, I asked to be polled is, Michelle, can you just give us an update on, is this even going to happen because of the second delay? I mean, I know we got the extension, I think, in December, January, and then we did this. We already had one, I guess what I'm afraid of is we've already had one business owner back out. Are we going to lose more? I'm assuming the delay is because the business owners are going to have to spend more money to make this happen. I'm assuming the quotes came in way too high again?
Uh, so the, the quotes, um, the bid that we received, we, was high comparable. We did have one owner that had, was withdrawn from the program previously. And so although the bid overall was lower, it's still higher than what our initial budget was. So the delay we, we gave ourselves within the, um, bid that there's, the, the bid is valid for 30 days. We needed just time to meet with each of the owners to talk about what we received, what their share is going to be, have paperwork that they need to sign. So we anticipate that on the 24th, you'll have a resolution to accept the base bid. There were alternates that were included. And Region Six's recommendation is that we begin the project with a base bid, um, which would be within our, uh, budget, we anticipate. And then alternates are not decided until after we get into the project construction and we know what change orders we might be dealing with and, and what's available. So we have some alternates that we can move forward, you know, with from the city side of our buildings, which, you know, we, is a different discussion, but, um, each owner kind of will have to have that look at alternates as we get going as well. But the, the base bid, we believe, um, should be workable and I anticipate that that will be coming forward. We're meeting with owners this week, Region Six's, um, to just go over the results and, and process from this point.
And how many businesses do we have to have participate before we lose the 500,000 from the state?
Um, I believe we have to have eight participating businesses. And so, um, we should, we should be able to have that. I think we had 11 to start. So we, I, at this point, we haven't gotten any inkling that anybody is looking to, to remove from things, so. But if we have one that does, we still have that flexibility.
So across our fingers that we, you come back in two weeks and we approve this?
That's, that's, yep.
And then would construction start this summer right away?
Construction would be this summer timeline. Uh, we would have mobilization probably in like May and June. Construction start this summer, has to be done by a summer of next, of '24. So, uh, about a one-year, little over one-year construction period.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, your honor.
You're welcome. Any discussion up here or out there? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Into, uh, Category G Resolutions, what's your first one of those?
Resolution 202371 to amend the stormwater utility rate credit policy for the city of Marshalltown.
We're hoping for...
Move to approve, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. On the agenda tonight is an amendment to a policy that the city council passed in 2013. This is in relation to the stormwater utility rate credit. In other words, the monthly bill or every other month, um, is, we have current policy, is that they are able to apply for a reduction in their monthly bill if they meet certain criteria. Right now, we have five criteria outlined in that policy. Four of them are in relation to providing onsite detention in excess of what's required by the city's code. A fifth one is related to discharging your stormwater directly outside of city limits. We had a request to amend our policy to provide for a sixth option of a partial reduction. And that is where a portion of their property discharges outside of city limits and they're only charged for what's discharging to city infrastructure, like storm sewer, ditches, cloverts, and those kind of things. So that is what's in front of you tonight. It's a Level Six option for this policy and it does provide for that ability to split a parcel. And I'm open to questions.
Your honor? Could you explain how you would measure the, the partial payment? Is there a tool or what does that look like?
Yeah. So, uh, as part of this policy, uh, the applicant or the property owner, the tenant, those types of people can submit an application requesting this reduction. For Level Six that's being, um, added to the amendment, uh, what they do is they're required to submit some documentation to show what parts of their property are discharging to the city and which ones are discharging away from the city. So that can be something as simple as, uh, you know, a topographic map showing the, the clear drainage lines. So that does have to get into the level of detail of showing, you know, a roof structure and what gutters are going to the back of the property, which ones are going to the front, depending on the layout. Um, and then we're able to determine how much of that property is, is draining inside city limits. For residential properties, they're all a flat rate of one ERU, which is current rate of $4 if their parcel is less than two acres. If it's more than two acres, there's a calculation in there that we prorate how much impervious area is draining to city limits and, and that's how we calculate that. So essentially, we're just looking at the parcel, splitting it and pretending it's two parcels and just recalculating it based on what's coming to the city limits.
Your honor?
Yes.
So it, Heather, is the burden of proof pretty much on the homeowner then?
That is correct.
Other questions or comments by the council?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, obviously this just involves properties that border the county that are in city limits. How many properties are we talking about here?
Uh, it's a pretty small number. Most of these properties that border, um, and drain outside of city limits, uh, if they're less than two acres, they fall under our flat rate anyway, so you can't have the ability to split it. So it's a pretty small number. I did not go through and, and evaluate each one that borders city limits, though.
But for the small number that do, this is a sizable amount of money, as we, we know from the landowner that, that came up here and spoke to the council previously.
Yeah. In that particular case, they're looking at about a 65% savings on their monthly bill.
There's no way you're in a position, if 51% drains to the county, there's, you're not in a position to waive? You don't want to recommend that we just waive all their stormwater fees if more than half the water goes to the county?
Correct. I am not, um, in favor of that type of a scenario.
Thank you, your honor.
You're welcome. Any other consular? Any public comment on this one? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, next resolution, please.
Resolution 2023-72 supporting and authorizing the application for the HUD Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Program Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As I think you're all aware, we operate and administer the HUD Lead Hazard Control Reduction Grant on Healthy Homes. We're currently in our sixth grant award administration, which is due to end in September. The notice of funding opportunity is out and posted with HUD, and so new grant applications are being accepted and are due May 2nd. So the grant award, this round, is proposed for four-year terms. So a four-year continuation of a grant would be still a competitive round. The maximum amount of award is $5 million plus an additional $700,000 for Healthy Homes interventions. We do have a 10% matching requirement to the lead-based component, which is the $5 million that's required. We typically secure those matching contributions through a few different ways, one being owner contribution. So when a rental property owner, for example, is participating, they pay a 10% match on a project. We also count in-kind contributions, which includes like our office space. We have some in-kind contributions from the Finance Department, HR Department. We also do have some federal funds that go to our Finance Department. But we use that to usually secure most of the matching funds. There is a possibility, in order to get to that 10%, if we're not able to do that with those other means or get other contributions, that we do look to the Consul to fill that gap. Typically, in past years, we have not had to do that, to look for other funding sources. But we do ask the Consul at the time of our applications for that commitment to meet that 10% minimum requirement. I anticipate, based on initial budget estimates, at most, we'd be looking at up to maybe $100,000 based on past history over that four-year period. So that's something that if we're awarded and the final budgets are negotiated, we would look to come back to Consul for that kind of finalization before acceptance of things. But we are looking to submit a new application for another four-year term. If awarded, they anticipate starting in September, so similar to where ours is ending. So we would have very little overlap or gap, which would be good. So be working on that application. entertain any questions? It would just be for Marshalltown only, estimating maybe 100 projects over the course of the four years.
Questions or comments by the Consul?
I just have one, Your Honor. Michelle, so you said this one runs out in September?
The current one, correct.
Jackie, you already lost Esmeralda.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll have that filled before September? Or will we wait to see?
We would wait to see with the new award to fill that position, correct.
For Jackie, it would probably just transfer over then?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, you have to maintain a program manager at at least 75% of full-time. Ours has always been at 100% of full-time equivalent to run that program. So that would be a requirement of the continuum. But with that very little overlap gap or something, then it would just be a simple transition.
But Esmeralda was doing other things for you besides this?
Correct. Her percentage was not 100% under the grant. Hers was only a portion.
But you're still going to wait to post the job until the lead grant?
That's the intention right now, yeah.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Your Honor.
Other questions or comments by the Consul?
Your Honor, the memo states it, but I think it's pretty powerful. Can you talk about the value, the grant value secured since 2003?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is actually 20 years of lead remediation work that we've done in our community. And so we have had $16,195,830 worth of federal grant dollars that have come into the community. That does not include the owner contributions that have been made or the other matching in-kind contributions that we've had associated with this grant. But that's the direct federal funding that's come to this community through these various grants. So 20 years this month, actually. April of 2003 is when we began our very first lead grant. So I'm pretty proud of that program and the work that we've done primarily in Marshalltown. There were times when we covered other counties as well, but the majority of our work has been here in Marshalltown.
For those that don't know about lead, the lead grant or lead problems, what's the main result that you get when a house is rehabbed?
Yeah, so obviously, we go in and we do a full inspection, looking for lead-based paint. The biggest areas of concern that we usually see are around windows. We're looking at homes that are built before 1978. And so the lead dust that, if you think of your older windows, especially your double hungs where they slide up and down, it creates a level of dust that settles on the window sills, on the floor. For our kiddos age six and below that have a high hand-to-mouth activity, they're playing with their toys, they're standing at the window, they're likely to ingest that lead contaminant into their bodies, and their bodies can't process that. And so that's where poisoning occurs. We often say that it's an impact to their intellectual development, physical development, and things of that nature. It can be serious, in very serious cases, can actually cause death. We have had some very high-level rates. One of our very first cases that we worked on, the kiddo was, I can't remember what age at the time, but his bed was right next to an old window, and he would spit on his hands and basically finger paint on the window in the lead dust. And his levels were so high that he actually had to go through kind of a chelation process where they clean the blood, essentially. And so can be extremely devastating for our youngsters. And so that's one of the things that we try to do. So a lot of window replacement is our biggest component, a lot of siding that gets put on where there's chipping, peeling paint on the exterior of homes. So those are the big items that we see and we notice, you know, from a drive around, we see that impact on how it improves our housing stock as well, in addition to making it lead-safe for our families. And we do work on owner-occupied, rental-occupied, and contract sale properties for low-income households.
Thank you. Any other comments up here or comments or questions by the public?
Thank you.
Roll call on this one.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
The key to that for me is where it says "and" resolution, isn't it? All right, what's our next one?
Public hearing and resolution 2023-74 adopting the budget and certifying taxes for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and related transfers between funds.
This public hearing is open at 6:05 PM. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So inflation is a big factor in our calculation of our taxes and the cost of the city. So as our properties have gone up, so have our taxes. But yet, we want to raise the city's taxes even more, sort of double-dipping. According to my calculations, I don't really think you should raise the rate to $16. I know that keeps the consolidated rate at 41 magically. Getting three taxing entities to all add up to $41 for five years in a row is pretty spectacular. But I don't think you should do it. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place, Marshalltown, Iowa. You remember probably me getting very emotional up here last time that I was in front of the Consul. I did reach out to each one of you. And Barry, I thank you so much for returning my call. I appreciate that. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to get back to you. Gary, thank you so much for your time. I do appreciate that. Mike, you as well. It really means a lot that you took time to talk with me about this. And Barry, again, thanks for reaching out. I just think that it could be lower than 16. I know, and I listened to this morning Jeff and I think it was you, Barry, that were on, and that you were talking about the fact that you came up with that number, Gabe, because it was just to make sure that it wouldn't, you know, it was high enough that if there weren't any issues. But I'm just thinking that you should, guys, just reconsider very much. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, time for, yes, sorry?
Lyle Heineman, 2804 Arnold Drive. I started coming to these meetings back in June, and one of the first comments that somebody got up and said was, we need to decide what we need or what we want. And I still see a problem here. I see that we want to go with wants instead of needs. And then on March 13th, Clarissa Thompson with Micah was here, and she indicated that 25% of the population here in Marshalltown are below the poverty level. I think you need to reconsider about raising the tax rate. I realize that everything has gone up, but each and every one of the property owners have problems also. So I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Staff review?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So the budget decisions Consul has made during the January-through-March Council meetings have been incorporated into these documents. The report is showing the proposed property tax levy rate is $16 per $1,000 of valuation for regular property and 3.00375 for agriculture land. The proposed tax levy of $16 is an increase of approximately 64 cents per $1,000 of value. For $1,000, for $100,000 assessed house, the property tax would increase by approximately $35 per year. This rate maintains financial resources for future fiscal years. It prevents large tax fluctuations for future fiscal years. While the FY '23 budget is showing on the budget forms, we are not doing a formal budget amendment at this time and will address this at a later date. Instead, the amounts have been reestimated to show the projected activity, and the transfers between funds have also been included. Any questions?
Well, after that staff review, it is time for Consul comments or questions. Hearing none. That hearing is closed at 6:12 PM, and we do ask for a resolution to be approved if anybody moves to do that.
I'd move to approve, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-78 providing further conveyance and transfer of title for 503 Bromley Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Raymond Jackson.
Public hearing is open at 6:16 PM. Did you get any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Public comments? Staff review?
Yes, we issued this property out for a sealed bid, and we received one from Mr. Jackson for $601.
Time for Consul comments. Declare the public hearing closed at 6:16 PM. Does anybody wish to move approval of it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That resolution carried on to the next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-75 providing for the conveyance and transfer of title of city-owned land to Cynthia Lewis at 1021 South 5th Avenue.
Okay, the public hearing is open now at 6:13 PM. I assume you did not receive any written comments about this one?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Nobody's jumping up, but if they do, while I call for staff review, I'll reverse field.
Yes, we received a request from Ms. Lewis to purchase, I think it was 37 and a half or 30, 30-some feet of our property, and so for $500. And so we have proceeded down that path. Tonight is the public hearing approving that. The lot that is created that is in that plot of survey is not big enough to be a standalone lot, and therefore, an affidavit of non-severability is required with this as well.
Thank you. Time for Consul comments. Declare the public hearing is closed at 6:13 PM, and this one also calls for a resolution.
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Carrie, next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-78 providing further conveyance and transfer of title for 503 Woodbury Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Raymond Jackson.
Public hearing is open at 6:17 PM. Did you get any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Time for staff review.
Yes, I apologize. My memo from the last meeting didn't get put in the packet, but this is a situation where we own 107 East Lincoln. There is a garage at 109 East Lincoln, which has a property line between the two properties right down the middle of the garage. The rumor that the neighbor had heard was that there were twin sisters that lived there at one point, and they built the garage on the property line. And so in order to effectuate the effective demolition of 107 East Lincoln, which is currently out for bid, basically parcelling off the rear 40 feet of the property and giving the garage to the neighbor for the cost of a dollar is going to save us a number of costs in the actual demolition and leave us with a lot that meets our city code in terms of accessory buildings on residential lots.
Those sisters must have gotten along a lot better than a lot of clients I've had. Any Consul comments? The public hearing is closed at 6:15, and we solicit a resolution on this one, too.
I move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-78 providing further conveyance and transfer of title for 503 Woodbury Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Raymond Jackson.
Public hearing is open at 6:17 PM. Did you get any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Nobody rising. Staff review?
Yes, we issued a request for sealed bids, and Mr. Jackson was the only bidder at $601.
Consul comments? The public hearing is closed at 6:17 PM. Anybody wish to move approval?
And so in order to effectuate the effective demolition of 107 East Lincoln, which is currently out for bid, basically parcelling off the rear 40 feet of the property and giving the garage to the neighbor for the cost of a dollar is going to save us a number of costs in the actual demolition and leave us with a lot that meets our city code in terms of accessory buildings on residential lots.
Those sisters must have gotten a lot better, gotten along a lot better than a lot of clients I've had. Any council comments? The public hearing is closed at 6:15 and we solicit a resolution on this one too.
I move for approval.
Thank you. There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That resolution carried on to the next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023 77 providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 503 Bromley Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Raymond Jackson.
Public hearing is open to 6:16 PM. Did you get any written comments?
No, your honor.
Public comments? Staff review?
Yes, we issued this property out for a sealed bid and we received one from Mr. Jackson for $601.
Time for council comments. Declare the public hearing closed at 6:16 PM. Anybody wish to move approval of it?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried as well on to the last one. You know, if we get this one as fast, I think we're going to set a land speed record.
Public hearing providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 906 South 11th Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to DJ Norum.
6:18 PM is our public hearing opening and did you get any written comments?
No, your honor.
Does anybody in the public wish to comment about this one? Else staff review?
Yes, this is a sale to Mr. Norum that will come back to you on a resolution at a future meeting with a development agreement as his bid of $100 was contingent upon him building an accessory building. He is the adjacent owner, so there is an affidavit of non-severability. Again, that would be required for any building of an accessory building on a residential lot.
Very good. After staff review comes council comments. Hearing none. I'll, well, actually I comment that you can easily go onto Street View or Google Maps and see what's going on there and that that one makes sense, but I'll leave that to the public to do that. And I declare that public hearing is closed now at 6:19 PM and we do not solicit any motion. So let's go.
Your honor, may I ask a question of the city administrator, please?
Okay.
Since there were some special restrictions put on his adjoining lot and these are going to be adjoined, no severability, does the fence requirement carry over to this property? Were we discussing that?
I guess I'm not understanding your.
When the adjoining property was, he bought the land for the tow truck service, the semi service, whatever it was, this is adjoining to that property, correct?
No, this is a, this is a joining to his house.
Oh, right. Never mind that. Never mind. Thank you, your honor.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, on to discussion items and the first one is the strategic plan update, first quarter 2023.
Yes, I included an update kind of in a new format in your packet, just really where we're at in terms of what's been accomplished and what is in process with all of our different strategies. And I would say I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about what's in there. I did appreciate the feedback from council member Isom for including some things on here, which I think I got most of them. But you can see that, you know, really it's strategy one, development and strategy three, our own internal stuff is where we've had quite a bit of work in the first quarter. And so quite a bit that is in process on all of these that will be coming back to you at a future date, future meeting for action updates and things. So I'm happy to take any input on the format, but if this is something that works, we'll continue to use it.
Okay, the floor is open. Mr. Lottie Hoff, Mr. Hoop and I are the only three that were on the council in years, in years past and we can probably all attest to the fact that we didn't have anything like this at all 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So it's nice to have the goals and to be tracking on what we're doing. Is anybody in the public, I meant to say the mic was open for the public too. Anybody wish to speak on it? All right, well, let's go on to the last discussion item, which is kind of a fun one. Trick or treat date and time.
Yes, your honor. This was an idea that I had brought up earlier and I'd like to commend the mayor for allowing us to talk about it because this is somewhat of a mayoral thing. And so we were kind of getting into his vast array of powers here that, talking about Halloween. What we're talking about here specifically is the beggars' night for the city. We're not talking about moving Halloween, anything else. It's just other towns have started to go to this and they really like it. There are several reasons to do so. One thing is if Halloween is on a weeknight, you're just getting home from work. You got to get the kids dressed up, get them out on the, get them out going to wherever you're going to go. By going to the last Saturday of October, it's on a Saturday, you can get revved up to go for the trick or treat night. Also, I would ask that other churches or the police and fire do it. If you have trunk or treat night, either do it on a different night or try and get done by 5:30. The whole idea is to get kids back out in the community again. The pandemic really knocked us away from getting involved, getting the community involved and just having a fun time. And then the other thing that I'd like to bring up is I worked second shift for 16 years. And when you work second shift, you don't get to do Halloween. I mean, you're just, you're going to work. That's what you do. And I bet you we probably have at least 2,000 people in this community that work second shift and that would just love to take their kids around trick or treating. And this will kind of be a nod to them too. So I kind of have an unofficial Facebook poll going and so far it's 32 yes and 2 no because I think we're moving Halloween too. So, but anyone that I've talked to, parents especially, they really appreciate the thought of doing this. I would be more than happy to hear anybody else's opinion on it.
Well, let me start. I've only got two powers that I know of, three maybe. One is a veto power, which I've never used in five years. Two is to set the date for the beggars' night, which I didn't know until the first time I got a call back in August going, oh, when are you going to set it? I didn't know. And by that time our kids were not doing trick or treating. And the third one is to screw up meetings or talk too much and make them too long. And so this one, number two, I'm glad you brought it up because I really think it's a good idea personally. So the floor is open on discussion about beggars' night. I also think it shouldn't be up to the mayor frankly, but let's, let's hear.
Good evening. Denise Bacon, 1749 Prairie Avenue. I've been in conversation with several people via Facebook that might kind of started the conversation. I would enjoy seeing beggars' night set on a Saturday evening and also doing trunk or treat at a different time because I feel like we're taking away from the hour and a half, which I'm going to ask for you to extend that also, from the residents in the community that are shut ins. I work for a company that I take care of veterans in their home. Last year, everyone was very excited for Halloween to come and I kind of feel like trunk or treat took it away from them and my clients didn't get anybody. I don't know if we can approach the possibility to, to ramp this up a little bit so we can get people out into the communities and not just hit certain areas, but that's another issue also. And in ending, I would like to see it from maybe 5 to 7 or 5:30 to 7:30. Just give them a little bit longer. If the light's on, you can knock. Thank you.
Thank you.
This also, we need people to begin getting their lights on and participating in Halloween too. Some people like, in my neighborhood, we used to get 150 kids easily. And last year I think we got three. So we need to get that kind of reverse. Get your lights on, get the candy ready and let's see if we can bring this back. It's so much fun to begin with.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. I definitely go along with what Denise said and remember seeing a lot of replies on Facebook and how sad everybody was that no one came to their homes and we didn't even bother turning our light on because we haven't seen a whole lot. So yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea to, you know, get the, get the community involved in trick and treat night. It's a lot of fun, especially for parents, because when my kids were growing up, I loved going out with them. I mean, getting candy is great. So anyway, thank you so much.
I'm going to reiterate, we're going to ask that the people that do trunk or treat, do it on another night if you can and, or make sure it gets over with by 5:30. It's not like we're going to drop a truckload of gravel in your driveway, although that's an idea or anything like that, or start ticketing the cars in your parking lot. But let's all play together fair here and turn Halloween into something fun. Thank you.
We had a neighbor across the street and two houses over that had a scarecrow in his front porch. And you walk in with your kids and ring the doorbell and all of a sudden the scarecrow gets up out of the chair and scares, you think you might have to change some underwear. Actually, it was the funniest thing and he got so many people coming to his house just for that experience, you know?
Jim Shaw, 522 North 2nd Street. I've got an address for the gravel on the driveway.
Very good. Anybody, anybody else in the public on this one?
Your honor?
Yes.
Just, I guess, one question, one comment. Is this coming back as a resolution or is this just something that you're going to instill moving forward, I guess, to make sure that what we decide continues?
You know, I think we had, since it's a discussion, it'd have to come back as a resolution, but if it does, I would suggest we do it as a resolution and just set it because it doesn't make any sense that the mayor does this every year and that might get the word out better frankly than in advance, more in advance.
And the only comment, obviously taking credit for the small things we do as a council and otherwise, kind of the arts and culture master plan got adopted, building bridges of hope and vibrancy in our neighborhoods. This kind of does very nature of what that encompasses of kind of bringing back some of the atmosphere of what a neighborhood truly is and I think it's a good idea. So thanks for bringing it forward.
Exactly. Since you two are within a few blocks and have kids, just warn them that we tried to scare people too after our neighbor did that. Just, just, just saying. Yes, sir.
Lieutenant, I'm from the Marshalltown Police Department. Just from a safety standpoint, I'm all in favor of this idea and the police department will not hold our trunk or treat on the same night's beggars' night. So we can, we can manage that. However, if you are going to extend the hours, which absolutely I agree with that too, extending it two hours, if that's a consideration here. However, if we're going to have it on a Saturday, can we move it up just because that many amount of kids in the communities walking around? The nighttime comes, it becomes a safety issues for people utilizing the streets. On top of which, it is a weekend, it would be a weekend and you'd be talking about drunk driving playing a factor. So I just want the kids to be safe and if you could, if we could move that up so that the sunlight is out a little bit longer, just a consideration.
Good, very, very good thoughts. I agree completely. And there's a way to figure out when the sunset does set.
Yeah, I think somebody will tell us when that is.
But we could, we could have it set by, you know, 15 minutes before, or I know there are different definitions of sunset if you're boating or a pilot or whatever. But have it so that it has enough time the kids can walk home if they're out walking 15 minutes or something, give a cushion there.
Just, just my two cents from our perspective and trying to keep everybody safe, so.
Yeah, very good input. Thank you. Thanks for being our sergeant at arms tonight too. Any other discussion? Okay, well, that one was kind of fun.
Do we need to give direction, your honor?
You could do that in a motion.
The administrator to bring back a resolution?
You could direct staff to bring back a resolution, absolutely. Yeah. Truly.
I make a motion that we take away some of the mayor's powers.
Number three.
That, we won't talk penalties, so. That we make Halloween trick or treat night, beggars' night on the last Saturday of October every year and we begin at 5 till 7.
I don't know what the sunset is.
If I could amend that while you're saying, I would say set it for a two hour window so that it ends 15 minutes before sunset.
It says 6:10 PM for October 29th of 2023.
I will second that motion.
And I won't be able to repeat it unless I know which, are we talking 5 to 7? Okay. There's a motion and a second to limit the mayor's powers gladly and have it be every Saturday, the last Saturday of each October, 5 to 7 PM. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.